Very well, I'm six points. I want to express my objection to the entry of the minutes. The last meeting, there's that the entire meeting was held in bad faith. There's fraud. It's held in violation, uh, Mr. Schatz is right, it's held in violation of the Open Readings Act. The legal instrumentality for the military construct is MCL 15.263. Broken language is all meetings of a public body must be open to the public and must be held in a place available to the general public. All purposes must be permitted to attend any meeting except as otherwise provided in the act. And those otherwise exceptions are things that do not need to apply to what happened two weeks ago. Uh, the exercise of this right does not depend on the prior approval of a public body. Now, there were more than thirty people sent away from the meeting. People who drove long distances, people who were experts, people who were professors. Uh, evidently some of the professor view then drove over couldn't get in. Uh, those voices need to be heard. So in order to add to that and to make it appear that there was support of the project and the reselling issue, uh, those kind of voices were kept out. Uh, and the voices that were allowed to be heard were in two basic tiers. One was people who were either financially, professionally, or threw under some sort of conflict within this relationship, connected to the project, those were in support. They came up reading prepared stuff, reading off pieces of paper. The other group, people who are actually concerned about Marshall, its long-term destiny, what's going to happen to the resources here? Are we not going to be co-opted by corporate fascism? Uh, those people spoke from their heart. They didn't come up reading prepared statements. Uh, you know, people come on, reading stuff that was written for them. Perhaps seem to be leaders of the community, people we've never heard of. Uh, and then suddenly the rabbit, last minute rabbit file that has like there's a hundred and eight, uh, letters of support, which we're not giving that any pre-bid prayer to public scrutiny or inspection. And at this point, I'm demanding on behalf of everybody behind me, that all of those letters of support and not in support, uh, be available to clerk's office for public scrutiny and physical inspection. So, you know, sadly, the whole thing, you gotta have everybody then. You didn't take heart as you were recorded to in your, uh, according to the statutory requirements of MCL 124.25, the guideline factors in making these decisions. Uh, there was no good faith certification, it was just, it is that way because I say so. And the damage is going on as we speak. Every day when I go by there, it looks worse, it's a loom scale. How was that green for the environment? You guys got taken for a ride? Or you're on, you're on the wagon? So, uh, you know, anything that you pass, you can review. So keep thinking about this, you know, you made a real bad decision. The damage has already gone on and there's nothing that they can do over there in terms of a construction project that is going to be upgraded back even though it was destroyed. You know, this is above man-made law, this is above undue influence of corporations. This has to do with the laws of physics and the laws of nature, and when you violate those things, you run into trouble. And that's where the natural law comes in. Everybody is subject to the jurisdiction and nobody has immunity from it. So, the last meeting was perpetrating the fraud. And, you know, when there's no mutual deliberation, no actual discussion of the concerns of your constituents, but having this crypto-dictatorial notion that I can vote like I see fit. If you think that way, you shouldn't be in office. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on agenda items? Yes, ma'am.
Really trying to find one fifty-nine to walk me through. Hi, I want to talk about mental health as I'm on your agenda, right? Alright, so I guess that's a great and safe discussion right now. I'm kind of wondering how much mental health issues that this megasite is creating? How much, uh, mental health issues are, is the city, the township, county, mega, medic? How much are they creating by bullying residents? Because that's what counts for being bullied. We haven't been given a say. Y'all are like the bad kids pushing the sound in the playground, pushing our face in the sink. What about the people, the residents? Fifty, I would say fifty to seventy residents who are not able to gain access to get a seat, to be able to hear or contribute at the last eight-hour city council meeting? Why didn't you do that meeting so that they could be a part of it? They had a right to be there. I'm sure that wasn't good for their mental health. A summit point needs to get ready. And guess what else? We're not going away, we're gonna keep coming to your meetings, wanting to keep trying to protect our national security, keep the corporate welfare at a minimum, try to keep our environment pure, our water, our air, our land. That matters more than an EV battery factory, any jobs that you guys have to offer. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak on agenda items? Yes.
Emily Anderson-Ridge, six one sixteen, Street, Marshall. Um, as of twenty-four, the agenda items that were passed minutes, there's incorrect spelling of my names. I'd like that to be corrected, not under approval of the agenda of the past minutes. Also, um, item number seven, uh, city bills. So I have a question. Um, if I want to know about a line item on your expenses, do I have to, do I personally have to put it at every single, you know? I know this isn't normally a question of answer, but...
If you or a resident has a question on the bill, just contact my office and we'll go over it.
Okay, I appreciate that. There's a few things you can just break down, but you're okay. You know, you don't have to...
Seven, you will have more.
Okay, um, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Item nine, um, all. Yes, nine.
I also, um...
Any other came in ever?
Oh, we, uh, one-two-three-eight-zero-twelve-mile road to Serrasco. And the mental health, or, um, it's been so upsetting, the whole idea of, of putting a megasite that will be the largest industrial park in the nation. Not, not in Detroit or a big city, putting it in Marshall, um, is mentally upsetting. It's, it's really been stressful. Um, that meeting a couple of weeks ago where everybody couldn't get in, that was very stressful. And the whole idea of, of people getting up and speaking about how the result was going to end in a mobile factory or plant would affect us, how it, I felt it wasn't being listened to because I don't know how you could have a prepared statement saying that you were going for the dome change printed up ahead of time if you hadn't listened to what we're saying. Um, also, I was just wondering, is this, um, city council rules and order of business? Is that where you're going to cut a stump from five minutes to one or two or three minutes? Um, I, I think one minute definitely isn't enough time to say what you want to say. I've already spoke over a minute and, um, maybe five minutes is a long time. But when you have issues that affect our lives so, so severely, and if it were just that little blue oval plant, that would be one thing. I wouldn't like it, but when you're just talking about moving another more industrial zoning all the way up to Serrasco and beyond, that's not our issue here. Because you don't have any say over that, although I think you have no say over this either. But, um, that other land could be used to help with the mental issues that we might have in our community. You know, like there was a green space or a park or something that would be helpful to us instead of a bigger area to put our ground and our water and, and our, um, more factories that we don't have enough people to work at anyway. Um, so I would suggest, um, maybe at the subsequent council meetings, you actually listen and don't have a prepared statement saying you're voting against whatever the joint planning commission says or whatever the people say. You know, listen to the people that come in, not just having mine made up before you even sit down. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that was more than three minutes, so I think three minutes is not long enough.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Yes.
Hi, Emily Anderson-Ridge, six one sixteen, Street. Good to see you guys tonight. I know today is mostly about budget, the rest of us are here to go surfing and a lot of news stuff. But the budget is a big beast to look at and I'm hoping that we're going to be hearing all the informational portions of the things that I'm making my brain, uh, address. A lot of big things, those are the revenues for the general fund, it says twenty percent miscellaneous. Like, that's a large shock, you just call us the biggest? So I'm hoping that we get some insight to what this idea is, is it just, hey, take this? So, it's twenty percent of the budget, so just curious about that. I'll give you some, some explanations for that for, thanks, guys.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Okay, item nine, um, what, item seven, which is our extended agenda. A, the city council minutes, regular session, May first, twenty twenty-three, and our work session, May eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Um, city bills, purchasing from four twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three, an amount of one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and forty dollars and forty cents. Purchases on buy-to-buy, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-eight cents, for a total of two hundred and six, two hundred and thirty-six dollars, one hundred and ninety-one and eight cents. We also submit our C third quarter fiscal year twenty twenty-three financial report, our third quarter twenty twenty-three investment portfolio, our third quarter fiscal year twenty twenty-three cash position report, and our third quarter twenty twenty-three budget amendments. A commotion to approve the consent amendment? Over.
Absolutely.
Moved by council member, uh, supported by council member Wolpersberger, in discussion.
Nice job, Wolf.
Yep, very easy to do and follow, so thank you very much. Although, oh, both of us, anyone?
Number Karen?
Yes.
Number Chaney Huddick?
Yes.
Number Gates?
Yes.
Number Trager?
Yes.
Number Underhill?
Yes.
Number Wolpersberger?
Yes.
Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Most fair, if you're on.
Thank you. That brings us to presentations and recognitions. Anybody here from mental health?
No.
No. Um, for this is, uh, we did a proclamation for mental health, May twenty twenty-three, whereas nearly twenty-five American adults will have a diagnosable mental health condition in any given year. And whereas almost half of all US adults will experience a mental health challenge at some point over the course of their lifetime. And whereas only sixty percent of people with mental health disorders saw treatment in a prior year. And whereas the leading cause of disability in the United States is neuropsychiatric disorders, including mental disorders, behavioral disorders, neurological disorders. And whereas the by-year age-adjusted suicide rate for the town of County is forty percent higher than the Michigan and US rates. And whereas early intervention is the key to improved outcomes for people with mental health challenges. And whereas recovery from a mental health condition or challenge is achievable and attainable for many, um, people. And whereas every member of our community can play a role in promoting treatment for good mental health. Observing May as Mental Health Month provides an excellent opportunity to increase awareness of mental health disorders and therefore empower the community to normalize good mental health awareness and practices and take meaningful action to support those citizens assessing care to achieve better mental health. Mental Health Month is also a yearly reminder of the importance of organizations like Summit Point, Calhoun Counties, provide crisis intervention services as well as training such as mental health first aid, crisis intervention for law enforcement units, QPR, so that all citizens are able to recognize signs and symptoms of poor mental health and reduce the time between diagnosis and treatment, thereby strengthening the health of our community. Now therefore, I, Jim Schwartz, mayor of the city of Marshall, Michigan, do hereby proclaim the month of May twenty twenty-three as Mental Health Month. In greater Marshall area, I urge all the citizens of Marshall to do their part, normalize good mental health practices by working together and supporting their community's efforts to educate themselves as much as possible to recognize signs and symptoms of mental health challenges, thereby shortening the time between onset and treatment, giving everyone the opportunity to maximize their potential. And witness to whereof, I have here on two, set my hand and call the official over the city of Marshall, Michigan, to fix this first day of May, twenty twenty-three, by Mayor Jim Schwartz. Um, keep, we have a proclamation for National Police Week? That's right. Uh, proclamation, National Police Week, May fourteenth through the twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Whereas each year during the month of May, one week is dedicated to recognizing and honoring the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. The twenty twenty-three Police Week will be May fourteenth through May twentieth. And whereas there are more than eight-hundred-thousand law enforcement officers serving in the communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Marshall Police Department. And whereas since the first recorded death in seventeen eighty-six, there are currently twenty-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-five law enforcement officers in the United States that have been made, that have made the ultimate sacrifice, been killed in the line of duty, including six-hundred-and-fifty-six members of the state of Michigan. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officer Memorial at Washington DC. And whereas five-hundred-and-fifty-six new names of fallen heroes are being entered at the National Law Enforcement Officer Memorial this spring, including two-hundred-and-twenty-four officers killed in twenty twenty-two and three-hundred-and-thirty-two officers killed in the previous years. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officer Memorial Fund Thirty-Fifth Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. And whereas May fifteenth is designated as Police Officer Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, a US flag should be blown and have staff. Therefore, may it proclaim that the city of Marshall observe May fourteenth through the twentieth, twenty twenty-three as National Police Week in the city of Marshall. Publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and communities across the nation. Thank you for your service.
I just want to thank, thank everyone for the support of the police department. Uh, it's, it's a tough job these days, as everybody knows. Uh, just last week, um, got a chance to bring DC into Memorial, uh, at a moment there because, um, I personally have known three officers that have died in line of duty. So, uh, it was a great thing for me to bring my boys there and share that experience.
I hear the emotion in your voice, thank you.
Jim, do you mind shaking his hand again, I missed it?
Yeah, she's got it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, that brings us to item ten A, our fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget, public hearing and revolutions to adopt city and market budget, related property tax, miller's grades and fees. Derek?
Thank you, Derek, members of the city council. Um, actually, William, if you want to come out, I think we'll tag you in this here. I know there's some detailed questions that's supposed to be asked, so we can, uh, maybe a little deeper, we'll get asked. Um, as city council is aware, the draft budget was distributed to you on the first of April. Um, so you had that to interview and provide questions and comments to me and city teams. Um, last Thursday night, we had our in-depth work session where we spent a lot of time going through the general fund and bonds, talking about some of the priorities for the year. Um, this current budget, since the nose rate's the same as the previous years, discussed Thursday night, we're not recommending that we raise the nose rates in the future, where they were set previously in years. Uh, the general fund revenues are anticipated to be seven point seven two six million. The general fund expenditures, seven point seven two four million. So our revenues exceed our expenditures, around a thousand dollars. Again, not a lot, but we do not have a structural deficit, which is something we've been trying to avoid the last several fiscal years. So, um, our services match the income that we have. So just like families at home, um, we're providing our services with the budget we have. Um, actually, William, I guess we want to break down that percentage, maybe for the audience who talks about that, you know, the taxes that we collect are about five point six percent.
Uh, yeah, as far as the general fund revenues go, yes, but a probably fifty-five percent are from the taxes we collect. Um, other large portion of that are state share revenue, um, charges for services, license permitting, and interdepartmental charges makes up that portion, but that, that large portion is from the tax that we pay on our finances.
So the question, Wolpers, blank is revenues?
Yeah, so that's, um, it's kind of, it is a catch-all for a lot of things, but really what you're seeing in there, the largest portion of that, this year we had a master plan where we're receiving a grant for, so there's some grant money in there for fifty thousand dollars. Each year we can get some revenue sharing from firekeepers, and that is around, around a hundred thousand dollars. So that's seventy-five percent of what we're seeing there, are those two grants. The rest is, like I said, you know, grant stuff throughout the year.
Thank you, William. As far as the general fund fund balance, which is kind of our rainy day fund, our savings account, we're required to have two point three four five million, which is based on policy. That's a certain percentage of our cash requirements plus what our debt requirements are. We are at three point one one eight millions, our excess debt, so we're doing the right fiscal things necessary to maintain our fund balance. Um, the federal funds, which, you know, federal dollars that have been disseminated to cities, villages, counties, state government even, Derek, we have about two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars we're recommending in this budget. That hundred thousand dollars moves towards the audiovisual equipment here at City Hall, including the city council chambers. You know, that's been on our docket for a couple of years, we just need to have some brothers to be able to do that. And then, uh, there's a hundred and fifty-six thousand of those remaining in federal dollars. We're recommending that we kill those, add that to some money that we get from accounting for the personages, that everyone pays in account, accounting, about seventy thousand there. And then, um, take a hundred thousand dollar grant we got from the Corona Foundation, take that three hundred, twenty-seven thousand, and put that towards the repairs that we're doing along. So even though we don't have identified specific capital outlays in the general fund budget, we're recommending that those be kind of our two projects for the year. And then again, we have other capital projects. Yeah, that's kind of the overview, yes, questions? Obviously, that's why we're here. But, um, appreciate the time you took Thursday night to go through the budget. Alright, um, should be mentioned, what would that grant, that also net twenty percent? Or the fire lighter that are through the state of Grant?
No, that, that has its own fund, actually, so that, that goes right into its own fund and that's in and out. So like, whatever they get paid, the formula matches up, so we'll get ring first. Great, that's outside the general fund, those, those three employees.
Alright. Any other question?
I'll just break down. I'll open the public hearing for fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget, public hearing and revolution to adapt city and Marshall budget, related property tax, miller's grades and fees. Those wishing to speak will have five minutes to do so, if you can state your name and address. Yes, sir.
Very well, I'm six points. Six one two three three. You guys have almost a million dollars more in your thinking, money, money, you can drop, are you cutting the picks? We're not here to have sweatproof off our nose so we can give money to all of you guys there and pad the accounts. We're not in a business in moderation and take a little bit of burden off our back because we're the ones actually funding this stuff. This is the problem with people who live in a two-dimensional world, paper shuffling, jaw lagging. Uh, they don't have a real passion to whatever it takes to actually provide the revenues so that you can handle almost a million dollars more than you need to have a percent. So, this is one of the problems with corporate firms. If we really had said anything more, what was going on? And if you, people actually embrace the notion of open office and that you're there to be public servants and not to do this crypto-dictatorial thing and the, and the, like I said, uh, then you probably would be able to avoid the insipidness pulses that are probably going to come your way in your future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
Emily Anderson-Ridge, six one sixteen, Street. Um, hi, holidays, I don't have the full agenda package coming out, I believe. I want to say it's twenty, twenty-three, twenty-three, somewhere around there. Review this, but propose budgets for the next year. Almost every item suggests that it will need to be amended, raised up. So I'm just wondering about that specifically, how, you know, you said that you're not expecting or recommending that the knowledge should maybe, or taxes will go up, but probably it's that going to be, um, funded. Maybe it needs to be amended and raised, you know, per se, I'm just making up numbers here, but per se, we have a hundred dollars, we need a thousand dollars, that's a bit of a gap, so... of a gap, so who's going to pay that yet?
I'm referring, I'm sorry, I'm referring to the third quarter adjustments amendments.
Is that page thirty, thirty-one?
Those earlier pages, yeah, that's for the the third quarter amendments. Yeah, that's not part of the budget, so we don't ever plan, you know, when we go to a plan, it's what we plan to spend, so I'm sorry, I was refusing to have a lot of finance up on the agenda tonight, but.
Yeah.
Those are, yeah, each one of those have to go to council, and they would, like, we have those fund balances to to make up those sometimes, sometimes we do have fund balances. The budget is the best we can predict right now, but you're at the beginning, and we can't see the future, so they're not always ones, right?
You can always say that.
So the biggest thing that I, so we adapt the budget tonight, and every three months we'll quarterly review of those numbers to see whether we're seeing or we need to do somewhere, develop a budget document, and that's why we do those quarterly reports. So that's why you saw those third quarter reports on the agenda tonight, because we need to adjust those and ensure we care. Basically, the budget means what our expenditures are anticipating to be at that moment in time, that's snapshot of this for the year.
So basically, my little brother that I was watching tell, predict what we're going to need, but then when our actual expenses will be different, so that for the fluctuation and right, so if we end up spending more, then that's when we adjust quarterly, we can occur, right? And we either ask for more on how to the next quarter to be obligated, or we do D and X, and be able to have that available for the fourth quarter as well.
So there's potentially several options. One, if the one line item succeeds, we won't be anticipating the spending plan for the year, we can take dollars from another line item, move those dollars into that account, reduce that one. That's that's one of the reasons we have that extra fund balance, so there's an unanticipated expense that we have, let's say, the river office and the three hundred thousand that I have. Take that to City Council, let's say, you want to spend an extra two hundred thousand dollars on our rainy day fund, make repairs versus just.
And I also noticed that there's a new inspection for safety, so I didn't know if that's fire retarder safety, EMT safety, sidewalk safety?
Building inspection services, so essentially for the last many years that have been allocated in the general fund, which is kind of our catch-all budget for police and fire and all that, we're actually separating that fund out, so that is like a budget per se it's a fund budget, so it's just, it's better accounting for those building inspection fees, so those revenue expenditures match versus being fully at the general fund. We had to try to keep those, well, we didn't keep them documented through your audit line, but it just makes better sense for us to have several months.
Specifically with building safety?
Your building inspections, usually building inspector, your plumbing, mechanical, electrical, all those permits now will be accounted for in that budget.
I appreciate you being able to answer that. And you as well. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Megan, I'm from Richsees on Michigan Street, and we very appreciate you considering your questions when we talk here, because I know you're not supposed to. But on the board call, they said that all of the water is coming to Marshall, now the wastewater is coming to Marshall. So of course, we have to read here, taxpayer, our heat leak catalog before, that can we figure out, well, number one, or if that is built into our budget, the cost for making that happen, if that's going to possibly be one of these [inaudible 0:11:37] from the government, who's going to pay for that? Because clearly, I'm against the [inaudible 0:11:43].
Understand, understand. So again, for everyone's understanding, all capital site readiness funds are being paid for by the state of Michigan, which at the end of the day is all of us, right? But it's not a direct dislocation from the city. It's not from you, right, the Marshall utility. So it's capital cost.
I had to later in the call, make a correction, so water, water is not.
Well, I guess there's a little nuance with that, okay? The City of Marshall will be the utility provider for the pool property. As part of that, we could have gone just on our own and increased our water treatment facility and drilled some more wells. However, a better regional approach was look to the City of Battle Creek, and we know they have extra capacity.
And that's what we had originally heard, they were providing the water, so.
So we will be a customer, we're going to buy water, some water from the City of Battle Creek, we're still a customer.
And have a person in that deal?
We are, yes. Yes, we're working on it. So again, we will be purchasing some water from the City of Battle Creek, because they have capacity, we'll be utilizing the City of Marshall water, it'll be a ground storage tank with a chemistry with the water we get mixed and utilize it in the plant. The reason we're a proponent of that is really from the state, right? We're on our own, Battle Creek's on our own, now that we have an internet, what happens if we have an issue with our creek? And that happens, right? Either form maintenance, next thing you know, we anticipate a forty-eight hour outage, Alex seventy-two, whatever. We can now, we now have some redundant supply from the city.
Yeah, I think that, I worked with the [inaudible 0:12:00] and there were times we had to go to the city walk because our flues would go bad or whatever. So the wastewater, are they, what, is that?
The City of Marshall will receive the wastewater.
That's a lot of water. So will they be operating?
Yes. And any little site readiness costs, any of that also above and beyond what is necessary to take care of our whole network, the State of Michigan's.
It's not me, you're right.
Not correct.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions or any other people wanting to speak? Seeing none, hold the public hearing. Council members, any questions, concerns?
I just appreciate the time that the staff put into preparing this budget. I have a lot of years under [inaudible 0:13:54]. And so for [inaudible 0:14:00] capital, I understand, we're working towards getting that back in the budget, so we have our [inaudible 0:14:10]. Five and a half, [inaudible 0:14:12]. Progress to look out, see where we're at, so thank you for your time, I know you have some merit.
Appreciate, I appreciate leadership.
I would like to second that. Few years where budgets coming to us early, they were still trying to figure out how we're going to be all working this year, getting early, being able to handle it. And if there are questions, you can [inaudible 0:15:01].
One of the things that, when I took this office is a balanced budget, and city staff was all aware that when they presented the budget, it had to balance out. We're not going to take from our rainy day fund. I would bring some comments here, you know, we as the taxpayers have that burden, we don't want a big nest egg, but we have the rainy day fund for a reason. So when they came to us and actually have a truly balanced budget, real numbers, I appreciate that from staff and the directors and working that out. It was, I should mention, the increase in sales of things of residences within the community also helped with the taxes being levied against and coming into the conference and able to do that. So thank you, staff. I do appreciate you ever put in there, we do have an actual balanced budget, not going into reserves at all, and I'm very pleased with the way it ended up, so. That being said, I just made a, oh, I'm sorry, comment, just because it came up at the last public hearing, I had several comments about the city manager's salary being two sixty-five. I just want to clear the air on that one, that was past budget where we had city manager overlap, the contract was coming out, there it is, and this kind of purpose, but it's not a salary number, so as an apartment, city manager's department, not a person, I see the number much lower in this [inaudible 0:16:00]. Just wanted to make that statement that all there is out there is all, I'm not going to pay for it, and we just don't have to worry for it, so. No, it's not really, so, yeah. That being said, any other questions, comments? Hold all, please.
And you, welcome.
Oh, that would help. Make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget, public hearing resolution to adopt the City of Marshall budget related to property tax, miller's grades and fees. Motion by Councilmember Karen, supported by Councilmember Traver, hold all.
Member Cheney, how about? Yes. Member Gates?
Yes.
Member Traver?
Yes.
Member Underwood?
Yes.
Member Wolfreuther?
Yes.
Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Motion, Karen, your honor.
Thank you. So all business, that brings us to, you know, reports and recommendations, item twelve A, City Council Rules and Order of Business Revision.
Derek? Evening, men, thank you for your opportunity to speak on this one. City Council knows according to the Marshall City Charter, City Council shall implement its own rules and order of business. Document was last updated on December seventh, twenty twenty. Assuming to accommodate those changes in the state law regarding [inaudible 0:17:06] we're going to get last look at. And it's recommended rules and order of business be periodically reviewed, vested in the City Council, they conduct the business of the city. After review, their public changes are being proposed, consideration, under two point one, regular schedule, we're asking that you add the June, February holidays to the list for [inaudible 0:17:30]. So there's a list of holidays that are in there that basically says if one of those falls on a Monday, we'll meet on a Tuesday, and we have been doing that, you know, it's not [inaudible 0:17:40]. So we're saying, or do that as practice, let's just. Second, two point two, special meetings, we wanted to add electronically to ways that the miller's can be given to reflect our practice again. Written communications, no one will do is just send you an email saying, you know, we're going to have a special meeting and then post it as [inaudible 0:18:00]. You know, we're not doing the door hangers, we're not doing, you know, tracking down and down, we're going to add electronic to that, that's the way we're [inaudible 0:18:22]. And then other public participation, six point two, apparently it's five minutes for agenda items, five minutes for public hearings, and five minutes for non-agenda items, we're recommending three minutes for agenda items, three minutes for public hearings, and two minutes for non-agenda items. Also, that's the summary of the recommendations, please.
Any comments?
Hello, I'm Shecko. What I said, I do believe this could change, it will allow us to hear from more members of the [inaudible 0:19:00]. In a separate time, and I think it still gives rather enough time to to point across them to to convey your need to.
I would add, we're all very accessible via email. There are other ways to be with us, so somebody has some point that they want to make this more in-depth, and it's going to require more time. We all are getting emails every day and asking for people's stuff, or other ways.
I would say, as someone who speaks a little slower than other people, and that I think slower, but speak a little slower, I would say that, I mean, I'm not sure three minutes is enough time, but I mean, it's reasonable, but I'm not sure it's enough time. It would be enough time for me to convey all of the thoughts and things that I think I would want to convey when I was speaking, because you get nervous and things like that. Just, just my thought process on that.
When we were looking at our rules, it was from a, so when changes that were happening with the county, to be a sample, they're looking at most of the things. I asked the city manager to do a survey, reach out to other municipalities in the area. We're one of the few that do the five minutes. Some are down to two minutes and one minute, someone's even a one minute, one minute. I don't think that's very conducive or allows them up. So most were the three minutes and the two minutes, or two minutes and two minutes. But if it's an agenda item, I think it's important to be heard, because if it's on our agenda, and it's important up here to the public, the public should have that input. So I don't think two minutes at that point go forward. I think what's presented here is reasonable, accountable, and as you said, enlarged gatherings, it allows more people to speak in a reasonable amount of time. So that's just my thoughts. We have some background and some thoughts, and this decision may sound bad, so I don't disagree with what's being presented here, which is my opinion. So no other comments? I'll take a motion to adopt the revised the Council Rules and Order of Business as presented. Motion by Councilmember Traver, supported by Councilmember Wolfreuther, although in favor, signify the same. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That brings us to item twelve P, Market on Main Street Special Event, Mark agrees. Oh, yeah. Are you going to say [inaudible 0:15:01]?
Good evening. City staff received a special event application for the twenty twenty-three Market on Main Street, dated July twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, from nine AM to ten PM. The event is scheduled to be held on Michigan Avenue between Eagle and Jefferson Streets as the years pass, and the map of the event was included with your report. There are no significant changes from the past year on the event map or planning. The event sponsors are requesting electric connections for the ends, rubbish containers, and barricades closed, which can happen. Again, all of that is similar to what's been provided in the past. We have, the city has received permit from that valve for closure of Michigan Avenue between Eagle and Jefferson. I'll note that each intersection of Eagle and Jefferson will remain open to northbound traffic, closure will be interior to the Golden Block, if you will. The social districts will remain in use during the event, and the DBA reviewed the event application and recommended it for approval at the regular [inaudible 0:16:33]. As far as budget impact, we expect the cost to be a little bit over five hundred dollars. The Retailers Association is a nonprofit, and therefore they will pay the difference between the cost and our five hundred dollar waiver amount for nonprofits, and we will do that exactly after the event, when cost can be determined. Ms. Marchess here, one question.
Just, I mean, yeah.
I'll ask you another question from earlier. The, you're still trying to get the Green Street project, this little park group, I assume if that, if you were to get a response from [inaudible 0:17:58].
We've actually adjusted the detour so that both the east and westbound traffic will go on Mansion Street instead of Green Street. So we usually, the center detour is Mansion for westbound and Green for eastbound, and we just changed the detour for Mansion for both directions, so that if Green Street is under construction at this time, it'll, it'll.
So what's been going on in this, will you, third year?
This is our third year. We learned a lot last year, we started with trying to do four events last year, we've cut it down to one, and we feel like we're doing a better event for the communities by doing just one event. And we need to make early, and trying to find ways to make sure that businesses that are, you know, often insider included in this.
Yeah.
So it's just, it's amazing for people to come down to Marshall on Saturday.
What is your participation rate so far, you think it's going to be well received? I know when we were doing four, some were part of it, some weren't, but I think you have the right idea, doing the one big one?
You mean, as far as participation of the [inaudible 0:17:55]?
Yes, yes.
As far as I know, everybody is on board, and we think everybody's asked. We have a lot of participation, we're trying to get some other vendors on the street as well, and I couldn't hear that there so well, but the center lane will be left open in case something comes up, we have to shut it down in the middle of the day. We have to shut it down in the middle of the day for the uplane or cars that may need to. But we're providing music all day, we have some other things coming in, up here last year, the pet parade, the eating contests, the alligator sanctuary, this from the back. It's gonna be a big hit for people bringing in things.
You had a good turnout. Yeah.
Thank you so much for helping us stay in town.
Any other questions for?
Are the bins barricaded? I know for the Blue's Fest, well, I believe last year they had some eyes that were safety and things like that. Are they just regular barricades, or are they, is there, how is that handled? And, and what about the extra, do we have extra waste cans and things like that?
Right, so the ends will be barricaded with our standard type three barricade. Um, the sponsor groups are initially the groups that coordinate any additional security, um, on a barricade. Should we feel necessary and they, or, or they feel necessary, and they, and they coordinate that, the public safety department. So I don't think that's planned at this time. Uh, additional, um, herbide, herb side parts that, um, the city has, uh, purchased, acquired to grainger will be supplied, uh, in the area, and that is part of our grant for special events. Those get deployed by P.P.W., the day, the Monday following, get that day picked up, and morning and then P.P.W. picks up their birds and takes them back to, um, garage.
It was a fun event last year, I immensely enjoyed the music and, uh, that eating contest was hilarious. And, you know, it was just a really great event, so. Congratulations to the.
Thanks for advertising and, and to, for, we had like, we had little kids. It was, it was a good event, a lot of good response. Based on the number of sponsorships we've acquired already, I feel like there's, um, a lot of support for it.
Any other comments? And that, I'll take a recommendation to approve the market on Main Street special event application, help in July twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Motion by council member Wolpersberger, supported by council member Ryan Underhill, although in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. That brings us to item twelve C, Tommy Joe's sidewalk use permit, again.
Um, so under section ninety, you have to see, uh, those court ordinances. Um, the council may allow for a license for the use of sidewalks or, um, restaurants, can they use other public private facilities and things? Um, so Tommy Joe's has made their application. And see the packet, it gives the drawing of how it can set up, it is ABA compliant, um, and we have.
Any, um, I know they've been doing it for years and years, but it's the same. No change from what I can tell.
All in the approval for the sidewalk use application, Tommy Joe's purpose and power cap pack may first, twenty twenty-three, April, period, twenty twenty-four.
And a motion by council member Karen, supported by council member Gates, although in favor, signify by saying aye. All the same sign. Item twelve B, sure sidewalk use permission.
Um, so there too, I'm from C, we were satisfied for the same sidewalk consent for their, I don't know. Again, they've submitted insurance, they've submitted, you can see their application as well, um, and it does show the ABA compliance.
I'll make the motion to have you approve the sidewalk use application for sure, for purpose and power cap pack, and make first point three. I have a motion by council member Traver, supported by council member Wolpersberger, approve the sidewalk use application for sure. Although in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign.
Mr. Graham, can I have a question? Um, there's definitely other businesses that have had pages on sidewalks. Any portion of mechanism for people to be able to apply for?
They want to wonder our code of rep.
Yeah.
You looking at that?
Looking.
Um, item twelve E, I agree.
Recently, um, we have received issue, construction bids, N.C., on three bids for improvements to South County Zoo from the mountain down to, um, the county river. If you recall, we received a, um, M.D.A. grant in twenty twenty-one officially. And, um, that supports this construction, um, partially, um, through a program that is the Transportation and Development Fund, specifically category F, and have several categories under that fund. Um, but that fund targets all season roads that connect, um, either state routes or county primary roads. Um, or connectivity should in the highways or various other road, um, be interrupted. So with South County Zoo connecting Business Route ninety-four, Michigan Avenue, to M. two twenty-seven, at Industrial Road, uh, this was a, a great project, and we were awarded a grant and came out of approximately one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, we completed design, um, late last year in the winter on this project. Uh, we also partnered the design of the resurfacing with starting our beautification of the South County Zoo corridor. That was motivated as a part of our goal to revitalize and attract, um, pedestrians to the River Overlake District. When we, um, got further along in design and timing of construction, we, uh, decided to issue this project as a resurface, mill and pay resurfacing project only. Um, the corridor beautification will take significantly more funding and time to make sure the city made up and all the adjacent businesses are on, just on, on the same page with what that needs to look like, we need to use some public outreach, get some public input, and then we finalize what we, what the residents and businesses want that corridor to look like. So at this time, we are only issuing a construction, um, award for the mill and pay of the road and some, um, sidewalk improvements that have to be done as part of the programs. Um, you'll see that we received three construction bids, the lowest with, um, from quality excavators in the amount of one hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and two cents. We are recommending award to quality excavators, quality excavators for that amount. In addition to, in addition to construction, we are asking for approval of an engineering, um, construction engineering contract with the, um, design consultants, E.N.G. They, um, won the bid for design services on this project when we did it, um, last summer. And this was in conjunction with the legged road re, reconstruction, which has already been awarded and is started last week. So, uh, their construction engineering services, uh, are in the amount of forty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars. This, um, project, as I mentioned before, is partially funded by a grant in the amount of two hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Um, unfortunately, our bids came in significantly higher than that because of the differences in construction costs between twenty twenty-one and our estimate that we could do for the grant and today. So we are having to cover some costs, and we originally had planned for this project, but we do have the funds in our local street, local street village fund to cover that, and that's what I'm proposing to do with the report. So as indicated in the impact, we will fund the project in whole with the local street village bond proceeds. Um, as we complete components of construction that are eligible for reimbursement, we submit that to M.D.A. and they reimburse us. I'm asking for approval of the construction contracts with quality excavators in the amount of four hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and two cents, with a contingency of forty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-eight cents, for total funded amount of four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. I'm also asking for approval of the construction engineering contract with E.N.G. in the amount of forty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars, with contingency of five thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars, for total funded amount of four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. I might be mistaken.
So, this is the height of the waterway replacement?
This will be, this will have an after walk replacement as we set it up.
It sounds like the hard on walkability, I'm wondering if you can tell us a little more about the sidewalk improvements?
Um, sidewalk improvements that are required as part of the M.D.A. grant include the mostly ABA ramps, so making those more, making them meet ABA requirements. Hanover street crossing is, um, not compliant. And, um, there's some challenges there because there's utility, um, and homes and things. And so we are doing our best to make them compliant and also try to plan a little bit for the future beautification work. But without that, my mind is a little bit, but the end days will be ABA compliant at, um, at the, at the cost.
We're beginning a conversation with them, uh, I mean, I realize that we did this at the time where we thought this was a pretty good policy. It was quite substantial, last year. So you're not, um, considering that?
Right, um, no, but it's, um, it's something I did think about when I was writing this report. So I certainly, I'm willing to put it out to them, because it, of course, you know, the grant coordinator has changed since we've won and, and all those things, but it's, it's certainly worth an ask. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You ever made it fortunate, maybe there's community that, that just may be doing a project with my contract, or maybe not. But usually they ask. They're making that happen.
You're giving a motion to approve the construction contract with quality excavator, ABA in the amount of four hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and two cents, with a contingency of forty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-eight cents, for total funded amount of four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. And approve the construction engineering contract with E.N.G. in the amount of forty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars, with a contingency of five hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars, for total funded amount of fifty-five thousand. So move with, uh, the amount of the addition that, um, Marbury does present and, uh, see. So we're adding, um, that, also kind of new state, um, grant for flex spending for the increase. But the dollar amounts are being approved. Um, motion by council member Traver, supported by council member Wolpersberger, uh, roll call, please.
Member Gates.
Yes.
Member Traver.
Yes.
Member Underhill.
Yes.
Member Wolpersberger.
Yes.
Mayor Schwartz.
Yes.
Member Karen.
Yes.
Member Cheney Huggett, yes. Motion carries, your honor.
That brings us to item twelve F, Blue's Fest special event application.
Mr. Mayor and Council, um, the council authority has submitted their, uh, Blue's Fest special event application, uh, which is an annual event for, uh, which is being planned for June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, from noon to midnight. Uh, as the news has happened, uh, it will require the closure of Michigan Avenue, uh, from Eagle Street to Jefferson, and then the closure of Eagle, or sorry, uh, Michigan Avenue from Eagle to Jefferson, and then closure of Eagle Street from Michigan Avenue to Michigan Street. Uh, the event sponsor is requesting the electrical service, barricades, uh, street closures, rubbish carts, uh, sweeping in the morning after the event, if you do that, the road's clean. And as part of the weight control of the, of the event, uh, the downtown track ends are typically removed and then we're using the thirty-two herbicarts that we've used in the past for the event, for the ladies to take care of that way. Uh, in addition to the special event services above, the event organizers have, uh, requested the suspension of the social district for that day, because they had their, their sponsorship in support with, uh, of your tent sales again this year, requesting that, uh, and, um, for the performance of their, so. Uh, the map is also provided, so you can see the layout, uh, which is typical of this year and last year's kind of a little layout that was changed. Uh, the cost estimate to support this, uh, special event is approximately probably two thousand dollars. Uh, in the past, the council has considered it to be a city event, uh, so we're not charged for that, so those possibly absorbed by, uh, departments or entities providing that service. Uh, recommendation is to approve the Blue's Fest special event application for June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, from noon to midnight.
Thank you. Questions?
I have a question, I don't know if anyone's here to answer this, I'm just wondering, I know this has been done in the past, but I'm wondering about the beer tent and the suspension of the social district versus just letting people purchase beverages within the social district system, so I'm just wondering why that, why that came about and why that, you feel like, preferable?
I think there's, 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 there's rules about control of that, right? Because you, you can have a social district, but once you, let me say, another special event, they have to, they're getting a special license, they're selling in that area, in a fenced off area. So instead, who's gonna be responsible for that? And so I think typically, uh, with our rules of events now, we've, we've set it, right, how would your tent in a closed off area? Typically, D.B.A. is, uh, you probably gonna close that off.
I added, I'm gonna add another, uh, to the D.A. update, um, it's free events. So the D.B.A. is paying these acts to come, for, not charging any money, money to come watch, listen to music. So this is part of our, it's, it's selling of the, of beer for the, the, I'll say, or the beer that's sponsored out of the, well, the, uh, the, the beer sales, they're not being thanked for that. But they have discussed this year, and I'm sure around the next year, I'll, maybe that model changes, and maybe they do something like that, because there is a lot of demand for people to watch, really. But it has been discussed, uh, in the name trial. Any other questions? The D.B.A. motion to approve the Blue's Fest special event application for June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, from twelve noon to midnight, four hundred dollars. A motion by council member Gates, supported by council member Underhill, um, although in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. That brings us to item twelve G, special legal council recommendation, um, council, council report.
Mayor Schwartz, council members. So, uh, bringing this recommendation to the city council, uh, the recommendation, uh, based on the city attorney's recommendation in your charter, three point zero eight, uh, city council only, especially the council, the city is an interest, uh, in the subject, party to dispute or assist in the city attorney's office. So I am asking the city council to consider the law firm of Clark Hill. Uh, Clark Hill is one of the largest, uh, firms in Michigan, but the United States. I have worked with those attorneys for, um, twenty years, and, uh, they have that very good partner, affiliate, in terms of time around the projects. You currently retain Clark Hill, uh, as my assisting co-council for the sale of Marshall House. And so I worked with them in other municipalities as well, um, more for the areas of law that I don't cover. Because many of you don't cover a number of municipalities, uh, Clark Hill is a very business oriented, uh, law firm, and they also have expertise in municipal matters, you know, election and findings. And so as we anticipate at some point in time, regardless of the project.
And so as we anticipate at some point in time, regardless of the project, Marshall will have some level of economic development, right? We have a industrial park, we have a lot of things going on, and with our offices with Clark Hill and Lansing and elsewhere, uh they bring a certain level of expertise to help us, uh you know, achieve Blue's goals endeavors that come across the council. Um also, uh elections, an area that we do some work in, but uh Clark Hill does a lot of election work. And so as I look at this and look at the development of Marshall, and I've been here since oh four, you know, there's been economic development and then it starts to, I think Clark Hill is one of the best firms that I can possibly recommend again, I work with firms all over Michigan and the municipalities are very impressive, and Clark Hill is really showing itself the, um in my opinion, an A band plus, uh in terms of early representation. Uh and then I should say, I know the member in charge of the Lansing office, with the Marshall actually, a number of years, so it's actually from Marshall, it's actually from Marshall, it has a special interest in Marshall, it's your group. So uh the projects I pop over, uh the members of Clark Hill are very excited to uh to come out for it in the D D A, but um charter requires at that rate of your pension, and I ask for a motion for economic development in elections. You discuss it.
Also, just to clarify, obviously, this doesn't commit us to any particular um level of spending or or anything like that.
No.
A lot of you didn't connect with that, should we have need of their services or the laws.
Sorry, we know before the council for every poll call, it should be really great, so but um, and I think they send thirty thousand more in there, even some of those too, it's not limited, it's a minimal amount, it's, you know, you do have an hourly rate, it's not really a term of sign work, um but they're there if we need them, and then they're excited for marketing.
Is there any kind of a retainer fee, like that we have to?
Oh, there's no minimum. Now, that's not to say that we want to develop that, that in this case.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd say probably if you're a potential project, you know, especially.
I agree, I agree. I'll take a motion to approve the retention of Clark Hill Legal Services per city charter section three point zero eight, D S David, for the purposes of economic development and elections. As a motion by Council member Wolfersberger, party by Council member Karen, um roll call please.
Member Trey.
Yes.
Member Underhill.
Yes.
Member Wolfersberger.
Yes.
Mayor Schwartz.
Yes.
Member Karen.
Yes.
Member Jane Hunt.
Yes.
Member Gates.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you. That brings us, um no appointments for elections, you know, the public comment on non-adjunct items, person of the rest of city council are required to give their name and address for the record. We call the time by the mayor. Member of the public shall be limited speaking for an maximum of five minutes. Ms. Shell will be addressed on non-adjunct items topics. Um anybody wish you to speak?
This is a little off the cuff, but one thing I think we kind of know.
Maybe everything.
Oh, this is kind of where Marshall Township, I think would be cool. Um some of the people in the cove spoke, have a lot softer voice than I do, and a little audio help would have been a lot appreciated for people, especially in the back, you couldn't hear very well, but I'm just wondering that, you know, is this an attempt to move music to people and and not listen to us, because this is the problem that we have been hearing over and over and over and saying over and over, you listen to us, but you don't hear us, you don't hear our concern. And it's just like, Marshall's been a great city, I've lived here my entire life, that's a long time, it's more than many of you have ever been here. So I'm asking you, are you going to show the true character of, character of Marshall? Is it going to be an honest and above board city, a pleasant place to live, or is it going to be dishonest and here and unpleasant? Um you may think that Marshall will continue to have this glowing, shining reputation, but if you don't listen to some of us that maybe don't live in the city limit, you're not going to keep that for very long. And all these nice little events that are planned, once that megasite goes in, I think you may find that those are going to fall a little bit by the wayside. So, you know, and then cutting us a few minutes, we'll see how that goes. I have taken less than five minutes most times, but there are occasions when you do need more, so I would just like to say thank you very much, and I hope that you are caring to some of us at least, because we're the people that are going to be putting up a roll of changes, you and the city, you're going to see some of that, just those on the, on the west edge, well. But anyway, I thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? None did I. Yes, sir?
Very late at six twenty to West Green Street. Uh was particularly disturbing and since the issue of mental health has been brought up, it's disturbing to see people are taking over the office, so literally discussing the paring down of the availability of citizens to express themselves to the council. Let me rearrange you. Guys, don't get it. I'd say you don't see the forest for the trees, but they've cut the trees down. Okay, every person may freely speak right, express and publish and use on all subjects, being irresponsible for these views and such, or again, no law shall be enacted to restrain or abridge. What's cutting five minutes down to three minutes? Is that a restraint or an abridgement? Yes. You can't do that. In fact, you can't even do the five minute thing, because that turns a right into a privilege, and that's what Barbara Fatchett and Zola are turning rights into privilege, just like we saw with people coming up and obsequiously asking the council if we can do our business in a certain way. Well, constitutionally, you don't have any of that authority uh to create that kind of stuff. You know, you presume you have this authority, uh but it comes from the governor, when she exercises her capacity as the independent chief of the armed forces, you know, P C L ten to one three one. Military authority on civilians, treasonous, unconstitutional, ex parte million seventy-one plus two, sit down and read it, learn something that you should know, took another boss, and they're going to be homecoming. Uh and uh, you know, why is it that grown adults who are supposed to be Americans are unable to comprehend the contours of what a right is versus a privilege? And when you get to that level of intellectual disability, you have to call it some sort of mental disturbance. So uh in terms of the intentional consumption of emotional distress that's happening on all the people in Marshall Township and Marshall because of this mental side thing, but we should throw into the mix a new form of mental illness, and we should call it authoritarian sociopathy. Uh and it's a presumption by purport, an individual put into position of artificial power to think that they can exploit, cheat, gaslight, act disorderly, do other ways to injure the people that they are supposed to be authorities over. One of their main horns of disability is symptomatically can be called alateophobia, the fear of the truth. Alatea, greed for fear, phobia, fear, or alatea is greed for uh truth, phobia, fear. Alateophobia, fear of the truth. You won't even address these expressions of truth, of coming from the heart as to what's happening to the city, but instead uh it's just one error and out the other, and uh we're actually in a way is good because people are going to see what the real action nature of the government is about, okay? One of them left. Uh lithium, uh I was a chemical engineer to an machine. Poison from lithium is far more insidious than any pollution that could have come from Enbridge. What came out from Enbridge were hydrocarbons, crude oil, uh carbon based compounds, organic, you'll uh find a lot of thermodynamics, they will eventually break that down, fertilize the local atmosphere, uh get broken down into uh water, oxygen, carbon dioxide, like ozone and ultraviolet rays. Lithium is lithium. And plants have to make a change, make it non-tox, make it non-toxic. Uh and uh once it gets into the soil, or you get a bunch of ninety dollar an hour slave wage workers breathing the dust of that, and then ten fifty down the air, just partners into disease, leukemia. What do you guys say that we should be careful of? Do you really do any research on this stuff, or are you just kicking the ball? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Get started back.
Corey Schumaker, how's it?
The officer. Name?
Corey Schumaker. So um, off the alarm, I brought with me a lithe bag. It's a fireproof, explosive proof, give it a line, pouch. I fly RC planes, this is our power source. Uh incredible battery, tons of power, I had one plane that occurred this week about nine on a, it's a lithe bag, powerful bag. They also have downside. When I first joined this flying club uh in Kalamazoo, um I wasn't sure about the car and these batteries, how dangerous they were. Somebody said, go home, take your little battery, your trash can lid, and get a nail and poke a hole in it. So I did it, and a moment, I'm like, how'd that happen? But again, so maybe ten, fifteen seconds later, it started to hiss over the house and some brown smoke came out, and for a long while, it started to pop, jump around, and the case split open and it exploded into this white flame, and it scared the crap out of me. Not like they'd do that, but it gave out this huge blue brown smoke. So, I gotta get going here, because I gotta let it crack. So they have a lot of potential, a lot of potential, but they also have a downside. I want to scale down and talk about test, test of fires. Florida, when they had the hurricane, they were popping up like crazy, the crate ones swinging much, right? You can't put them up with more. Uh a normal car fire takes about five hundred, eight hundred gallons of water to put out normal combustible, most gasoline. Some of these fires they found uh were resistant, they were twenty thousand gallons of water in some tanks. If you're playing, it looks like a welder brush, they make a hole in the asphalt. Get online if you're having it, and just do a YouTube search for Tesla compounds, and you'll see what I'm talking about. The flame is shooting out, it's weight jets, it's frightening, that's one battery pack, one battery pack. Some of the fire departments are looking at trying to figure what to do. So like some of, like Los Angeles, they came up with a portable tent that they fill with water, and then they got a crane and then pick a car, put it in front of somebody, but the brown smoke keeps coming off, the toxic smoke keeps bedding, and that's what's the problem. It's a deadly gas, like this last gentleman talked about, it's H S, it's hydrofluoride gas, fluoride gas is incredibly toxic, probably toxic. Back then, two thousand and twelve, OSHA came out with some recommendations, and they classified fluoride gas as acute, acute toxicity, everywhere one does science should get, uh for dermal under skin or if you inhale it. Um it's uh it's fatal, if contact with skin can be fatal, toxic, if you inhale, causes severe skin burns, it's from OSHA, and eye damage, corrosive to the respiratory jet, and symptoms may be delayed. So I I feel better if I'm a dishes plant now than one of these veterans. That's, so we got a whole building full of these batteries, also the take would be a tornado lung and some rain, and they go off, and there's not a community around anywhere that can handle the fire like that, it doesn't exist, it would take, it just can't be handled. So I'm afraid you guys get all that information, something like that. Not to mention if like China invades, national, and they're sabotaging, they're wanting to get back to China, who knows what could happen, or just some fireboat goes, it would be the grandest fire, there could, it could be the biggest mega disaster the state has ever seen. So why are they here anymore? Why are the Chinese here? Because they can't ship them, because the shippers won't allow them to boats, so that's why they're here. That's why they're building here, of course, they're heavy, but you know, if you're, you have a container boat, it's rather like highly conductive saltwater, nobody wants, that's why they build them here. So um. So problem is, well, the good thing is, right on the rise is there's new batteries going to come out, uh they're going to be safer, they may not have the power, they won't be like sitting in this power, but when that happens, they're safer, they're going to be cheaper to build, Chinese, they'll go back to China anyway. They'll be gone like in a couple of years, because it'd be cheaper to build over there, and they can hire people two times an hour, they're going to say, so long, so long, suckers. So they got a sweet deal here for the timing, it's a stopgap between now and the new technology. I think you guys will be amused by the Chinese.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. You're welcome. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Yes, sir. My name is Wayne Wright, and I live in Marshall Township. Um I wasn't anticipating to speak, um but there were some things that I, I wanted to say thank you on some things, and um maybe push on some other issues as well. Um I wanted to say, in terms of the beautification, I was encouraged to hear that um this body wanted to make sure that when it came to the beautification process of it, that you really wanted to make sure that public and that the Marshall town, um people, the citizens of Marshall um had a lot of say and input into those decisions. And um to me, that's, that's what this is all about, right? Like people having input, people being a part of the decisions. And I think it was discouraging to me last city council, when we were in the other um facility where we were talking about um the rezoning, and and I won't go into all the details of things, my wife was not able to get into the room um because of, because of just capacity issues, but she was able to talk to um an M Y, M Y reporter um who was there, who had previously, in earlier in the day, who talked to the mayor. And um during that conversation, it was interesting, it came up from the reporter, she had mentioned that um there that, you had mentioned that, oh, where were these people when, when we talked about the um the rezoning of the area in Marshall Township? Where were people's concerns on this? This is already pretty much a done deal, was pretty much the quote was, um what was sent to the reporter at that point, so it's, the decision was already made, too bad people didn't have an input then. I'd like to correct that slightly, because I was also part of a lot of those meetings over in Marshall Township when those things were being discussed. And we asked, people were there, and asked because I was there doing other things, trying to get things done on my property, so I was at those meetings, seeing how zoning was going to work with some issues that were happening on my farm, and wanted to understand things. So we were there when we heard about the the rezoning, and we asked questions, and some of those questions were like, why are we doing this, what's happening here? And the response was at the time, was, well, these are just potential ideas, we're down the road, you know, these aren't even, you know, for sure things, it may not happen, we're just, you know, we're just, A case, something happens, you don't need to worry about it. But we come to find out now that they have been purchasing properties, that they've been acquiring these properties. So it's just very interesting. So it's just very interesting to me that, on some aspects of things, we're very much, we want all this input, we care about the input. But in other cases, it seems like things are hidden from us. And that's hard. It's hard when, you know, the potential to be able to include the public from the get-go, saying, "Is this a plan? How can we make this approachable?" We've talked about wanting to preserve some of the farms, the historical farms, you know, it's all in the battle, Battle Creek and Wire, that they talked about preserving some of the Bear Creek area as a potential place, which, as far as I know, the people of Bear Creek are still there. I don't know if they are in a sales mode yet, but it sounds like they're already talking about it, if they're already acquiring. So it's just one of those things, like, you know, like, I appreciate this, I appreciate that movement in that direction, I would just like to see it on, not only on just beautification of a little road, but also thinking about it on much larger, in the future, you know, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I never spoke to him live, I never made a statement to him live, so I don't know where you get your information. Please correct.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't, I probably never too.
No.
And they, that's what my wife was told, so...
That's okay, I'm just clearing that up. I'm here for me, I never spoke to him live.
Okay, well, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Thank you, come on.
There is no microphone here?
No, there isn't. They don't work. It used to be...
Sorry, I want to say, I've spoken to you guys before about this, mostly the preservation part, just wanna figure out a few more things, kind of, in the old place that... I talked to the gal up in Lansing, her name is Nancy Fryngood, she used to be a former executive director of Michigan Historic Preservation Network, statewide historic preservation organization. She's currently a preservation consultant, working on projects around the country. She's been made aware of this situation here, and I read some of what, you know, what she during said previously. She's worried about the, how it's gonna destroy, or just our Marshall's landscape, mostly the farmland and historic farms, sheds and barns. We preserve building structures and landscapes because they connect us to our past, iconic spaces, decoration, inside and outside, so much about the culture and creative. When we look at historic buildings in Marshall, we should ask ourselves why these buildings are important to us. It does not enough to appreciate their physical beauty, we must also understand their place of history, and what they mean to the residents and community. Each one tells a story of people who lived there before us. When we drive through the community, we know who built the farmstead, and the families who've lived there over the years. Farms, farmhouse, and outbuildings are an important part of historic buildings down in Marshall, and they all represent memories of Marshall's collective past. Without these buildings, Marshall would have little physical representation of their agriculture and history. Now, I also found it ironic that this month of May, during the month of May, many events are planned to promote historic places for the purpose of instilling national and community pride, promoting heritage tourism, and showing the social and economic benefits of historic preservation. This is the month of May, all right? But in the month of May, here in Marshall, we're proposing to, or Medit, Meda, or whatever, is according to possibly the story or the span while we've built the historic farms, that we've kind of all known, kind of loved, even when you go off on the highway, you look over, it's just something that I've always remembered, it's just comforting to have seen that farmer, I mean, yeah. So, and also, okay, I'm sorry, okay, National Historic Preservation Month was established in nineteen seventy-three on the National Trust for Historic Preservation to help local preservation groups, historical societies and communities promote historic places and heritage tourism, and to demonstrate the social and economic benefits of historic preservation. So that's, that's, you know, nineteen seventy-three, and it's important, you know, to keep things that do, that are coming up, okay? Then, okay, then, our own governor, Governor Regent Whitmer, says historic structures and archaeological sites help to anchor our communities, said Governor Regent Whitmer. These projects contribute to our economy and strengthen the neighborhoods we call home. When we can educate people about our states' unique past and inspire curiosity, new skills, and good things, and job opportunities, we are helping build a stronger Michigan. I just find it ironic that this is the month of May, and we're promoting this, and yet, here in Marshall, we're gonna destroy things that meant something to a lot of people, certainly the people that live there, and even to our historic heritage. So I looked up, and word irony, is whatever a person says or does something that departs from one day, and what we expect them to say or do. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Emily Emerson Rich, six one six two Main Street, Marshall. I have a couple of non-agenda items, so I don't like mine, I'm a little bit, I'm a hostile person. First one is sanitation. I'd like to recommend the use of, the addition of, and the use of recycling bins for the special events, the sidewalk use, as well as the downtown walking area for rollups. We know it's twenty twenty-three, we know it's time to recycle, we know how to use a trash bin, there's a recycle bin. That would put us in a very poor thinking position in sanitation and waste regulation as well. Second item, stream, street and drain maintenance. As a homeowner on Union Street, across from Dead End Zoo, that part there, I'll say it, frankly, the rollup is not rated correctly when they put in the drain, so it cools quite a lot when it does, right? And because of the mature trees there, I don't want to cut down my trees, and don't cut down any trees, it puts a lot of leaves and branches and things like that in those trash containers, it gets into the drain. I know, because of the city ordinance, it says that as long as the drain is in my custody, my responsibility to keep that clear, not a problem, I can do that. But what I do with it is, I remove it for the engine, my compost bags, and I take it to the compost center, which, by the way, we have to pay, I mean, no fee to do that, right? So I wanted to do that. This week, the city came through and cleaned the drains, and their solution was to simply push it further down to the street uphill. So as soon as it rains, it's gonna go right back downhill again, and once the leaves dry out, it's like to fall right back to the drain. So then I recycle, doesn't make sense, you can be smarter instead of working harder. I would like to suggest that those people that are cleaning out the drains, simply have a bin or a compost bag, put it in there, take it to the compost center, always in the city. Next issue would be a safety issue. Around the fountain, we have several walkways, it is summertime, there's gonna be a lot more vans. When I was out protesting, appearing, well, not just myself, many of us were protesting Saturday. Cars don't stop in this town for pedestrian, which is not only a public and a low-octane item, but I think a part of it is because they cannot see the stripes in the walkway. So they, if you're A, you don't care, B are maliciously trying to harm people, or C, they just don't see that that is what a crosswalk is, and that pedestrians, whether in the crosswalk or outside the crosswalk, always do have to walk right away to the street. So I would like to suggest that we do some of that slush fund, or some road improvement that we can see, improvements that are coming up, to do the crosswalk maintenance, specifically around the roundabout fountain. I'd like to address the audio and visual requirement that we're putting in here, and those pieces are a hundred thousand mark. Tonight's meeting is move back to your chambers, which is wonderful. However, I did request the last county commissioners meeting, and they were granted permission to you to be able to use their audio and visual implement, not only for live streaming, but also for recording purposes, that there is no misrepresentation of your part or order. Everything is available to people, not everybody could attend meetings, not my small children's, elderly, et cetera, protection, all of that. So I would like to suggest that you move back to the Calhoun County Board of Commissioners chambers, and work with them until the upgrades can be made to your audio and visual system here, because that will take time, and it's urgent. Also, there is conflict with the township meetings, the township also called the meeting that typically will be tonight, but we pushed that to next week, so we're really grateful to them. So again, just requesting that you would work with the township more to alternate your weeks, so that we, in the public, can attend everything, we really appreciate that. And then the most important one is, when we know whether we do others, so you had information that you thought was good, and that pertained to the four twenty-five approvals, moving forward and have more information, I urge you to no, don't approve any more four twenty-five, so let it grow. Okay?
Thank you.
Can I just apologize? I took a wrong name, it wasn't you, but I just wanted to apologize.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Maybe, six one six two Main Street. So of course, I'm gonna talk about, but again, we've got proven scientists and experts, hobbyists, just converses, and talking about the environmental effects, and how it's really not good for the environment, regardless of what we think it's gonna do to the health climate change, so I'm not gonna bother with that. I've complained about taxes, and you're helping ease my pain there, I appreciate that. But what I did want to bring to your attention tonight is the promise of good jobs, and how that is a mistruth. I don't know if any of you are watching the other areas in the state, but the Old Town plant that opened in Lawrence, Ohio, those guys make sixteen thousand fifty cents an hour, they have a deal to make twenty dollars every seven years, so they're sleeping in twenty-three cent annual rates. The president of the UAW went up there this week and met with them, they've been apparently negotiating to union, obviously, since January, it's getting a little bit bad from the people of the virtual people, they start to do that. But my thing is, when we watched the four webinar that they said was a Zoom, some of those questions that I'll never address, so it was pretty clear to us that that was canned questions, that was, it was chandering, basically, that it was a propaganda show of the wages, that's the thing I want to keep coming back to, because they told us that they would not be able to say what the wages were going to be now, and they kind of apologize for putting out the things that they showed, regardless of what it was supposed to be before, and they were saying, "No, it will be, sort of comparable to what local people are being paid." So if I'm making fifteen bucks every hour, maybe it'll be sixty-five. And, you know, we talk about mental health, you're gonna have young people in there making not a good wage. The plant up there in Lansing, those guys are making low wages, they're making sixteen, eighteen bucks an hour, they're not getting MScs, just like the guys in Los Angeles, young people, they're not getting safety training, so we're opening up for a world of purpose. Number one, remembering a lot of people in there that aren't skilled, with the promise I've given them skill, and anybody that's worked in a factory knows, that's not how factory jobs go. It's not gonna be apprenticeships, it's not gonna be something sanctioned by a labor board. Those are already closed, or you can see, I've got my IDW brochure. IDW is kind of something, also ATR organizations, homeowners and private owners, locals are always getting apprenticeships out. So when anybody says they wanna look out for their kids, that is the absolute worst place for them to go, it's next to land, because it's a slaughterhouse, of course, a place for elephants, since they're not allowed. So I just want to, again, go on record to say that that is completely untrue, and there will be good jobs, sure, there's gonna be managers that ain't gonna make. I was looking at what we just saw in the Blue Oval Kentucky plant, and I was trying to figure out what they're paying, because Blue Oval Kentucky is Blue Oval, let's say, and Ford, which is basically, but this is going to be an extension of that, because some of them, more people have the Ford, the Blue Oval label than the Ford should. So I noticed that they didn't have anything, any jobs posted for like the regular, you know, Joe Blow employee, your regular entry level, but they did have supervisors, and those have to make around forty-eight thousand dollars an hour, so you're thinking, if you're not even paying the supervisor, what are you gonna pay the worker? So I'm probably gonna come in here and say it whole as well, in a few years, when this plant opens, and A, there's no lithium, so it becomes something else, or B, the jobs are being created. So again, I'm as bootleg as I come, and I'm just telling you guys what's coming, it's not true, they're not gonna have the jobs. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Heather Rocco, Calhoun County, Marshall Township, Emmett Township, Suresco. I'm sitting here listening intimately, because there is no audio, and that's shameful. Clearly seems calculated. I've never been in this building, so I had no preconceived idea of what I would or would not be able to hear. But I can't hear, and I'm in the second row. That's disgusting, frankly. More importantly, I am a taxpayer in two townships. I'm allowed to vote in one township, Emmett Township. Where in the hell is my voice? Where in the hell is my voice? It's not with you people, it's not with Marshall Township. Have you, any one of you met with Emmett Township? I wager to say you have not. That's my voice. You cut out my voice, you didn't give a rat's behind. Again, I still live in a Civil War school in Suresco. I'm not leaving. This pretty little face, it's not going anywhere. But I'm ashamed of each and every one of you. You call yourselves Americans? Do you know that every night, I have to unwind from the chaos? Don't roll your eyes at me, that's disrespectful.
I did not roll my eyes.
That is disrespectful. I am living in chaos, bang your hammer, do whatever. I am going to have my voice heard, because it has not been heard anyways. Then you need to listen to the people who have been cut out. Marshall, I'm so sick of hearing Marshall's benefiting, you're still pissed off because you didn't get to be the capital. God darn it, where is Suresco? Nobody can answer, I've been in touch with Meda. There are no answers. I literally am in a split township. I pay a Marshall Township, my voice was avoided. Emmett Township knows nothing. This is a shameful display of taxation without representation. This is not a representative democracy. I, I gave you the definition two weeks ago of moral corruption, ethical corruption. It meant nothing, I've given you two weeks, I do, Ryan. I was so impressed that you tried to recuse yourself. I think that something got to you, I think you understood. These bunch of buffoons said, "No way, you can't have any integrity, young man, and you're just writing about your children. You're destroying my grandchildren's mother's home, where my in-laws got married. Come live on Twelve Mile Road for a day. Then tell me what Marshall is suffering. And I would like all of this in the minutes."
Anybody else wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
George Whitehead, I live on South Legal Street in Marshall. I'm the president of the historical facility. So I just wanna plug out, because I have a second, this Marshall Guarding Act, we elected this a neutral, maybe for that or not. Anyway, because I... Mainly because I got members on both sides of the issue. So I, so I'm gonna go with the band, decide what they wanna do about those issues. But I want to be clear that we are in terms of the preservation of disrepair structures on mega site. Right, so these sites have been there for over a hundred years. So we had the Fair Creek site, the Bowery site, we got the Docville site, we got the Hope site. And they have a lot of history in this area that they contributed, you know, before Marshall was there. I am though, Marshall is here. So looking at this, it could be very beneficial if we define, you know, alternative uses for these sites. And I think it would be beneficial to the community as well as we can exercise alternative options for that. So you could save these properties, you know, the walkway or saving or recreating historic Marshall. Because once these sites are gone, then it sort of gets into, it's almost like becoming a rock, right? What is historic Marshall, if historic Marshall isn't here? So what I'm just urging you to consider is putting something in place that could use these properties, these properties as they exist, versus holding the views rather than raising them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, it's Water Creek, Marshall Township. All right, so today, I'm in line. We have a couple of pages of people that are supporting not having this mega site, in all different ways that it's hurting and will hurt us. By the way, you wrote in, I think today, and I just wanted to re-muster that. Right, I'm always like, I'm so upset, I'm so hurt, I'm so afraid of what my environment is gonna be. So, you know, I, I just want you to hear this, because this is really touching. By permission from Jan Corrie Arnett, "There is a deep, deep sadness in my soul that I cannot shake. Those who love the land and feel a precious kinship to it and all the creatures that depend on it have had our hearts ripped in two to witness the horror unfolding of the mega site. But the pain goes very deep because there are so many things that could have been done differently and every person affiliated with this nightmare knows it. Marshall was not selected as a site because it was perfect. It was selected because the advanced people had done their homework. They planted people to access the vulnerability, the level of greed, benign lack of civil engagement, and the unwillingness to undertake critical thinking on parts of the citizen's street. Those wishing to push their agenda planted people in key positions who are minions, narcissists, and would stop at absolutely nothing to please those they revered and who promised them a reward for their compliance. Make no mistake, they are being looked out for. The caring people speaking out for the land, the water, the air, the wildlife, the heritage, the future, are not conspiracy theorists, nor are they monsters, toys, or games that they have been repeatedly labeled by the very individuals whose behavior and temperament so matches the terms they use on others. Or it could have placed this plant on a brownfield, it could have come to Marshall with a plan while Duncan invited everyone to share the decision-making and have abided by a public vote if, if its minions could have respected the heritage, the life flow, the realities of this once beautiful city in place and showing empathy for their fellow human beings. But none of that happened. Marshall and its leaders have been played for fools. The earth suffers, a truly sustainable future is on. And for many of us, Marshall is a place we will never visit or spend a dollar in again."
Anybody else wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
I'm Rick Sandler, Swallow Green. I sat through last council meeting, you know, pretty much all gazillion hours of it. And you guys had the opportunity of a lifetime presenting GQ. You had the choice to stop this project to be heroes, but you didn't. You chose the coward's way out. Or was it the choice of your mega handlers? As we've made our way through the incestuous maze of in- twine commissions, boards, and councils, one thing has become abundantly clear. Mega calls and shots and everything, everybody else is along for the ride. I hope that what you were given, or promised, or whatever, was worth the destruction of this town. The first minute, or the minute, the first tree was cut down, Marshall, as we view it, ceased to exist. There's no going back now. You sold out the very people who entrusted you with their voice when they voted for you. There's part of your legacy, total screw job of an entire town. We asked you to put this matter to a vote, you refused. Been asked to call for a seat use review. Haven't seen one of those either. You were given a choice for one brief shiny moment to do the right thing, and again, you refused. Are you so laser focused on cementing your legacies that you ignore the very people who got you to where you are? The vast majority of our elected officials, county, township, and city have sidestepped, misled, and downright lied to us. That's right, I said lie. You, Mr. Mayor, have said that nobody on your council has signed an NDA. And yet you sit there with two of them and your city manager that all signed one. That sounds like a lie to me, or let's call it negligent, negligently misinformed about members of your city council. A bit touched with the state treasurer, calling for a full forensic audit of every red cent of our money that's been poured down into this project. I wanna know where the cost overruns are. I wanna know who is being paid for, for the marketing and the IT, and I don't know how much. I wanna know who is getting rich from the misfortune of others. Basically, I just wanted to know why. Why Marshall? Why now? Why a transitional technology that will be obsolete by the time we get this thing into production? Are you naive enough to actually believe that China will let forward these leading edge technology? I fear for this city if you are. You know, I have never been this way. I've never got up at a meeting, I've never done anything like that. You know, right now, I am just really, really angry with that government. I've been through Watergate, a random counter, you know, all the ghosts of the sixties, let alone that, you know? And you guys have no idea of the damage that you've done here. You know, it's not just the mega site. You, you've damaged people's belief in the political process. And that's gonna be your true legacy. The further the diminishment of the public trust in the very foundation of this country. Thanks for nothing.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to talk about the barns.
In the address.
Oh, we got a lot of them, I love to listen. Those, you know, you have the historical society and historical organization. You have, I'm not sure you have the power to save the barns now because you can't, you've signed off about everything you had to follow over. But those barns, that, the farmstead. I saw a glimpse of, of site plan, I don't know if it's for real, it was, that'll create an fire. But it shows the road going right through where the barns are, circling up. So Ford has no, no plans on saving those farms, no plans on making an entryway to get to the river area that they couldn't use, so they are gifting, gifting it. But there's no way they can use it. So you, you guys really gave up the power. And I, I was kind of upset because why bother having a joint planning commission? And then just walk off like Mary, saying he's, just, I, I see so much disrespect. And I feel like, like, I don't respect anybody, but maybe the people who made it. And I was a little, the, the idea of having another law firm to assist with, actually, probably this, the mega site. I'm upset about being set to two minutes. I don't usually take five minutes. I don't like to talk that long, but I think that's just trying to shut everybody up. You just don't wanna hear, and people that, the scientists or the professors that come and talk about pollution, when they're talking about the technical stuff, they need more than two minutes. Two, three. I, I think that's cutting off our voices. It's not fit to her in the first place. I'm just really so disappointed in how, how we're not really prepared. And like at that meeting, where you tried to refuse yourself, which was really proper and was the right thing to do. Because if you're, if you're sitting on the board, like, part of the joint planning commission, the zone, and you, you're part of ownership of the land, and you're making the decision, I, I think he should not have been on that either. That was, it's not an ethical one to be on that board.
And then he still voted.
So it would have benefited, had been ethical, it would have been more one. And, but you still wouldn't listen, you know? I, I don't understand why you waste people's time having a committee like that and then don't listen. It's just, and I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna use less my five minutes because I just think that's ridiculous to cut people off that, you know? Really have something to say for five minutes. I understand, you know, that, that sometimes meetings take a long time because you give people a chance to talk, but they don't listen. Or you don't let them in the room, but it just seems, seems like you should be able to give a person five minutes. I mean, what's, that's five minutes of your time. I sat there through, some people slept through it, but I sat there through, they had to listen. And I heard some people that were probably thinking it was gonna make someone a bit, but they probably won't. I heard what they had to say, but I thought, well, I'm listening to their opinion. I, I think that that would be a, a thing that should happen at meetings. If you want participation from the citizens, there, these are my five minutes. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak for council? Seeing none, we will move to council management communications.
I have a council meeting this month, this month, I think, and it's been made until June. I would just like to address the one point that we brought up, that's called the society.
Louder, please.
The city marshal does not have an ownership interest and never hold ownership of any of its properties. As far as historical preservation goes, that will be to the landowner, which would, you know, made it all for Ford, or, you know, whatever agency comes along. But that, as far as preservation, we don't have the authority to tell a landowner what to do with it.
I have a small thing I wanna say, and I appreciate the passion you all have in regards to our community. The passion, our community passion, is what makes our town who the treasure it is. Our history is built by a community of people who care. We all care. Do we always agree on every topic of, or decision? Nope. But we have to be able to agree to disagree by commonality, community, overcome the differences and forge ahead. My hope is that we all extend kindness, generosity, and compassion to one another today, tomorrow, and in the future. Thank you.
Do you have it?
The other comment I'll make is the issue with, and that obviously controls and regulates Michigan Avenue. I'm trying to get them to upgrade the crosswalk and install some signage. We've obviously not been successful with that, but I'm gonna push on that. Well, I think that's important too, especially as people start to use the park, so. They've given me some promises that they have to do. So what would you do with that? They just installed the stripes last year. They did, they didn't last, so they're gonna redo the stripes.
Low bid wins.
They're hoping after the winter instructions, they start the winter restoration, the signage that they were gonna do it. Obviously, it's a new one, so just keep pushing on. What?
Thank you. The only thing I have is, I did see in the ad by the Chronicle that said that, no, the city attorney said no NDA's for sign reference Blue Oval. That was not what was said. To talk about NDA's, I mean, signing my permit, council.
We just all, she said, I read you had the NDA's were tied to, and I did not say that. Everybody was here, we haven't tracked that, that's not a factual statement. I did not say that, they were not tied to it, but I want to work that.
Having said, the D is adjourned.